Call this meeting of Sylvania City Council for November 4, 2024 to order. Would a clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Frye?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Hanam?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Ms. Dow?
Here.
Mrs. Westphal?
Here.
All seven members of City Council are present, therefore a quorum does exist. Agenda item two, looks like we have two students in the back row, welcome. If you have any questions during the meeting, put your hands up, and if you need something signed, come on up after the meeting. We invite you and our other two guests here to join us in our pledge of allegiance, this meeting led by Mr. Richardson.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda three is additions to the agenda. I'm adding a five B, a possible passage of the updated version of ordinance 99, 2024, that was distributed to you this evening. This has some updates from the Plan Commission. I have no other additions to the agenda. Mr. Frye?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Members of City Council. Harry Mann, Mr. Sanford?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Chief Miller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schroyer?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shaw?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
And Ms. Prining?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
With that, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So, so moved, seconded.
Move that seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries and our agenda is approved for this evening's meeting as amended. Agenda item four is approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting on October 21st. Mr. Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move approval of the meeting minutes from the council meeting of October 21st, 2024.
Yes, submitted, seconded. They've moved that seconded to approve those meeting minutes as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries and our meeting minutes from October 21st are approved. Agenda item five is a report of the public hearing held at 7:00 PM this evening concerning ordinance 99, 2024. Mr. Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we had a public hearing of ordinance number, proposal of ordinance number 99, 2024. Nobody here for that particular public hearing was writing through a general explanation of how we got to this particular point for ordinance 99, 2024, and there were a few questions from members of council, but otherwise the hearing was closed at 7:00.
All right, any questions for Mr. Frye? You do have the certificate of notice attached to that. However, there was an out of date copy of the ordinance. Ms. Prining, did you get the new version, has to changes?
That's correct, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just added additional whereas's to reflect the referral to the Plan Commission, their recommendation, and also to reflect the public hearing information. So there were just three or four additional whereas's. The substance of the specially used proposed section 302 and 101, the definition gap, nothing else on those were changed.
All right. Mr. Hanam, would you like to consider passage of this tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll move adoption of ordinance number 99-2024. I'll read by title only, amending part 11, planning and zoning code of the Sylvania codified ordinances, 1979, as amended by amending section 1101.01 definitions and by amending section 1153.02 special uses, and I move adoption of ordinance number 99-2024 as an emergency measure.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 99, 2024 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries and ordinance 99, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item six, this is from the Toledo Metropolitan Area Council Governments. It is for storm water coalition mass media campaign next year. Mr. Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I apologize in advance for all the acronyms in the letter of sent here, it's love our acronym. A lithium here, so we are a regulated municipal storm sewer system. As a part of that, the Ohio EPA requires us to have six minimum control measures that we do for our annual storm water reporting that we do. One of those is public education and outreach, it's the first one of those. TMCOG, I usually stand up here and talk a lot about their transportation side with all the different funding mechanisms that we get from them, but they also are very strong in water and wastewater and storm water. This particular side with storm water, they want to increase how our partnership is doing minimum control measure, number one, in our public education. So they put together what's in front of you, which is a mass media campaign that they want to do for next year. They'd like for their membership organizations to participate. The cost of it is $30,000, which is an exhibit B. Our participation based on a parcel count is $871.81. So for the $871.81 that we contribute, exhibit A lists all of the different things that they want to do. Video ads, display ads, airtime on broadcast television. OTT streaming would be if you're watching your favorite Netflix show that has commercials, you may see it pop up there. YouTube, while you're streaming online, you may see it pop up in an ad there as well. So a lot of different deliverables there, they partnered with 13 ABC to work towards that. I do think it's a good step, you know, we do what's required for minimum control measure number one. We have handouts and some different articles that we distribute throughout the year to do that public education piece, but certainly not as effective as this proposal in front of you, so I would recommend approval.
And what is the message that TMCOG is trying to get out?
It's a lot of what you can do to keep your streams clean, you know, how you wash your cars, salt, management during your winter seasons, fertilizer on your, on your lawns, those types of things, so you'll see a lot of that throughout the year, especially specifically targeted to the different parts of our season that we have in Ohio.
Any questions for Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just curious whether, I mean, appearances on the news and commercials, things of that nature, are we being asked to participate in, in the publicity of those things, or is TMCOG handling everything?
As far as I know, they'll handle it, I have not been approached personally about us participating, but it wouldn't surprise me if they didn't ask for some of their membership to help and do some video spots, so yeah. We haven't gotten quite to that step yet, but it wouldn't surprise me if they did, so.
TMCOG does have full-time staff personnel who are in charge of the storm water coalition.
Being a lot of on-air talent with what they can do would probably do most of the heavy lifting, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Dow?
Mr. Shaw, I recall back when I was on the tree commission, they would occasionally have some information as well, finding like fertilizers and some of, I don't know if they did much with salt or anything like that. Would there be an opportunity somewhere along here to be able to share this information with them? I'm not sure who the, no, you're with, you're with the tree commission representative now. Do we not have one right now?
No.
There's one.
Oh, sorry, okay, got it. So I guess I will ask then, if there's a information I could share with them, that they might be able to then share with others when this starts to happen?
Of course.
Okay, fine, thank you.
The administrations recommend approval of this ordinance 119, 2024. Mr. McCann?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number 119, 20-24, authorizing the mayor and director of finance of the city of Sylvania, Ohio to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Toledo Metropolitan Area Council Governments, TMCOG, for the Storm Water Coalition 2025 Mass Media Campaign. I move for passage of ordinance number 119-2024 as an emergency measure.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 119, 2024 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries and ordinance 119, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item seven, this has to do with our funding acceptance and now moving ahead with the Sylvania Schools Pedestrian Hybrid Beacon Project at four sites, Mr. Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the first piece, we have two action items here on this particular project. First one is our ODOT-LPA project agreement. You guys have seen many of these on the different LPA projects that we do using state federal money. This one, the LPA agreement comes pretty early in the process. Just as a reminder, this project has federal funding in all phases of the project. That's design, that's right-of-way, that's construction. So we put the agreement kind of up, up to the front portion of what we do here, but this is a reminder, it outlines our relationship with ODOT throughout the project, talks about funding participation percentages, overall project development, outlines responsibilities on who's doing what, environmental commitments and anything else that goes with it. So a very standard boilerplate option that we do on this particular project, but we would recommend approval of the LPA agreement.
Questions for Mr. Shaw? Our ordinance 120, 2024, amending to this agreement. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number 120, 2024, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an agreement with the State of Ohio, Department of Transportation on behalf of the city of Sylvania for the Sylvania Schools Pedestrian Hybrid Beacon Project, and I will make a motion for the passage of ordinance number 120, 2024 as an emergency measure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 120, 2024 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries and ordinance 120, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. All right, Mr. Shaw, the next one.
Second piece of our legislation tonight is the engineering services proposal from DGL Consulting Engineers. DGL was the one who did the original study for us to help get us the aforementioned study, or the aforementioned safety funding that we've gotten. So it made a lot of sense to go forward with that. We had two interested consultants in our letter of interest that we did. They were the most qualified to handle all four of these pedestrian hybrid beacons. Their proposals in the amount of $131,524. The LPA agreement that was just in front of you, one of the pieces of that was it describes how that portion of the project is going to be paid. Ninety percent of that, the $118,371, will be direct paid from ODOT to DGL, so that money does not pass through us. The $13,153 is our portion of it, and that's what we would be required to pay. So a pretty good deal on this one. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have on your century proposal.
Well, let's look at the project as a whole, we're getting the engineering started. What is the construction schedule and the city's total cost?
Yep, will be 90/10 the whole way on this, and we probably, we actually did submit an OPWC application to help supplement this even further. We'll know in November how the OPWC scores and ranks, but I anticipate us even getting better than 90/10 on this project. So I think our project's going to be successful with OPWC. Construction is scheduled for 2026, we'll probably do the bulk of the year next year for design. The great part about this is a couple council meetings ago, we had that construction and maintenance and right-of-entry agreement with Sylvania Schools that takes a whole piece of this project out that, that costs us time usually with right-of-way, so we can go right into stage two, engineering design, those are due in February. Be great if we could get close to being able to sell the project towards the end of the year and build it in '26.
There are no questions, we do have ordinance 121, 2024. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number 121-2024, I'll read by title only, accepting the proposal of DGL Consulting Engineers LLC for professional engineering services relative to the Pedestrian Hybrid Deacon Project, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of $13,153. I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 121, 2024 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries and ordinance 121, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. We're going pretty fast tonight, I'm going to take a break and talk to the two students in the back row, so you can hear, understand what's going on. The motions that are made come from the committee chairman for that part of the city's business. Mr. Richardson is our streets chairman, that's why he did those two street, or the street ones so far. Mr. McCann is our utility chairman, so he worked on one on the storm drainage. These are pretty straightforward ordinances, they're not controversial, and the city is allowed to pass, the city council is allowed to pass them as emergency measures if five or more city councilmen are in agreement. Most city ordinances happen that way. If we don't get five votes, then it'll have to be read a second and possibly a third time at future meetings. There are other committee chairmen around the table. I think, let's just name them since we're going so quickly, Mr. Hanam already did one tonight, he is. Zoning and annexation. Mr. Hanson?
Parks and Forestry.
And you're on with Streets, yes.
And I'm president of council, so I have two committees, safety and finance.
I'm buildings and grounds.
Already mentioned utilities.
And I'm Mary Westphal, and I'm employee in community relations.
And what school are you from?
Notre Dame.
Okay, I kind of thought that'd be the case. Your school sends people to our meetings. Okay, let's move on to agenda item eight, I see that you already picked up your agendas from the side table. I should have done, should have told you about those earlier. This one is Monroe Street Traffic Signal Improvement Project, this is yet another acquisition of easement and construction easement. Mr. Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we are at the home stretch, this is our last one on this project, so we planned a full year to acquire all the right-of-way needed for our signals, and we're in November with our last one, so really good. This particular one is for the Fairways Condos. This took a lot of work most of the year just to get it in front of you. The way that their condo association was organized and the way their bylaws were set up, they needed a lot of upfront work in order to have an official sign it. So we did work with their attorney and spent quite a bit of time getting that process done so that we could accomplish what was here. But two pieces here, one is a permanent right-of-way take and one is a temporary take for the Fairway condos there. We reached an agreement with them, never really was an issue the whole way through, this was just a lot of legalese work most of the way. For $2,255, this was a known expense in our 2024 capital improvement budget and our account numbers listed there that those funds will come from, so we would recommend approval.
I don't have a diagram to look at, is this on the southwest?
Southeast.
Not the fifth third quarter, obviously.
Right, so opposite the fifth third quarter, exactly, yep. All the rest of the properties have been acquired, we've gotten them all done, so we are really set and ready to build the project.
Except for the fifth third part of it, which we're proceeding without their.
Engineering design is almost complete on that signal, so.
We do have ordinance 122, 2024, and if there's no questions, Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, I'd like to introduce ordinance 122-2024, read by title only, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into a contract for sale and purchase of real property for a portion of the property along the south side of Monroe Street, that's the fifth third band intersection match intersection in amount of $20,255 for the Monroe Street Traffic Signal Improvement Project owned by Fairways at Sylvania Condominium Association, providing funds for said purchase, authorizing the payment and the purchase price. I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second. It has been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 122, 2024 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries and ordinance 122, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. I'll turn to page two of our agenda, we have in front of you ordinance 123, 2024. This is amending our ordinance for towing services in the city of Sylvania, chapter 771. Chief, I need you to tell us what's going on here.
So before I jump over to this position as acting captain, one of the things I was working on with the consolidated dispatch was towing services. Our dispatchers used to dispatch, we would just call them in and they would call a rotating list, whoever we had on the list, and they would determine who was up next. Going to consolidated dispatch, they decided they couldn't do it, then it was going to go to Lucas County Records, and they decided they didn't want it, so they punted to Toledo Police. Toledo Police looked into several organizations that would basically do what our dispatchers used to do for us. That's been a three-year process, and finally this August, they said, hey, we're ready to go. I had been working on it, in the chief's folders was a rule that was dated 2-86 that dealt with towing regulations, and one of the regulations required that they be within the city limits. And there is no tow companies or storage lots within the city limits anymore. So, and looking over it, I approached, I started with Kevin Haller, and it's gone on to Joe and the law director about it, and I think the best course for us is so that it's open and available for everyone to see what these rules are and not just in a file cabinet, is to actually put it into an ordinance form, which is actually what the city of Toledo did, and I did some research with theirs. Kind of pulled between the township Toledo and what looked like it was going to fit for the city of Sylvania, so.
This issue has evolved over the decades that I've been aware of it. When I first assumed office, I was told that Jakes did all of the city's towing in no uncertain terms. And we've opened it up since then to other companies, and now we're really going to make it more accessible to everybody.
Currently, we only have one tow company, still Pat and Jakes. Part of that has been, because if we went on what are existing rules and regulations where it was going to be hard to have anyone come in, I didn't want to start bringing people in if we didn't have some rules and boundaries in place, and we have no way to do a rotating tow list. Right now, the officers have a cell phone in the cruiser with the Pat and Jake's phone number programmed in, so we just hope we don't need more than one tow truck. Yeah, because we have one tow company to call right now. And hopefully that will evolve and as this goes, and we'll have multiple, so if it is bad weather, it will expedite us getting the roadways clear, so.
Questions for Chief Miller? We have ordinance 123, 2024, chapter 771, Mr. Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce ordinance number 123, 2024. Mr. Frye, before you do that? Yes. Um, I'll admit I didn't get this until today, and I would like some additional time to review it, and I don't think there's a, I don't think this is a crisis, is it? So if we could wait till our next meeting? I don't even necessarily need to refer to committee, I just need some. I just need some, I didn't have time to read it thoroughly today, and I would, I'd like to read these things before I vote on them. So, if you, so I don't know if I want to, I guess I would move that we table this ordinance till our next meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded at Mr. Hanam's request to table this until our meeting in two weeks. All in favor of that indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we'll put this back on the agenda in two weeks. If you have any questions after you read it, please be in touch with either the chief of police or the law director.
I won't do that. I appreciate your accommodating my day job. I kind of, I'm a little behind this. Thank you.
Okay. We're up to agenda item number 10. This is the 2025 budget. This is discussed and ordered legislation. This is really intended to be the first reading of our budget for next year to cover our expenses through the end of 2025. To do a first reading, all I need is a reading of the title. Mr. Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 124-2024 and read by title only. To make appropriations for the current expenditures and other expenditures of the city of Slovenia, Ohio, for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2025.
It is not a legal requirement that we have more than one reading on this, but it's become our custom to have just a first reading, so it's out in the public's ear. People can take a look at the budget, get back to us with comments, and then we'll take a look at it again in two weeks and perhaps pass it then, or have a third reading two weeks after that. All right, thank you. And again, this budget was discussed at length in the Finance Committee a couple of weeks ago with Mr. Shoreair. And I didn't let you speak, Toby, but you wanted to tell us that there's no changes.
There's no changes.
Sorry, I went right over you there. Okay. We're up to agenda number 11. Joe, I think this is your letter, so you should probably explain this one to us. This is a little bit new to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've not done too many of these, at least in my twelve years. I don't think we've done any of them. But, the code is set up that we can. So, section 941, specifically 14 of our qualified ordinances allows for the city to assist in tree removals. And there's a specific method to do that. The two that's in question are two really large dead oak trees that are in his front yard. These are not city street trees. Normally, we would, of course, take care of these, but these are behind the sidewalk and on private property. The situation that started at his zoning office had gotten to complain about the safety of them. We, of course, went out and took a look at them, agreed that they should probably come down, approached the homeowner. He says, I don't disagree with you. They're completely dead, but I don't have the funds to pay a contractor to do it on my own right up front. What can you do to help us out? And that's where this code section comes in. So, this allows the city to administer the removal of them, and then all of the costs, including any administrative fees that go with it, can be placed on the property tax bill, or as a couple council meetings ago, it could be done through the utility office, too. So, we did that a couple weeks ago. After looking through this, we still think that the county assessment is the best way to go for this particular case. So, we got a quote from All Seasons Tree Care, any amount of $4,400 to do the complete removal of the hallway, bring in topsoil, regrade the area once they're done. We have about $100 of recording costs with the agreement that we have. So, the total cost would be $4,550. He will have, by annual payments, $455. It'll show up on his property tax bill. This would not get certified until the next time those special assessments come due, which would be next year. So, his first payment back would be in 2026, and then for five years afterwards.
Mr. Shoreair, this would seem to me that we're financing it at no interest. Is that correct?
I'm not sure how you set it up. How did you set it up?
I didn't do it at any interest. It was, and the guy's a public safety. The good thing is to get them removed. We have the ability to do it.
Public safety issue as well.
Both trees are in the front yard, as I understand it?
Correct.
So, Mr. Shaw, just for clarification, if this homeowner moves prior to the bill being paid off for the tree removal, does it remain with the new home? Does it go to the new homeowner? Is that part of the understanding?
It sticks with the property. And that's the good part of what the county. So, property could sell, transfer to the new one, comes up in the title work. I don't know if it's that way that they have to pay, make them whole at the time of closing. I think they do if it's a lien. I think that's how the auditor handles it. So, we would get.
Get our money in full.
Right up front, at the time of closing.
Got it. Okay.
It's basically a lien. This is just a lien on the property when the closing happens.
And just as an additional follow-up, so when we do the assessments, assuming that he continues to own the property, like we do other assessments, streetlights and so forth, is this a specific separate assessment that we're going to need to do going forward?
No, it'll show, once you do it one time, it'll always be reoccurring for those next five-year periods, so.
You're not going to have to redo that every, like, streetlights or whatever, right? Okay.
We will want to verify it makes it on to the tax duplicate.
Yeah, they, yes, that's, of course. And we've had to do that in several other instances on other assessments, but you're right. Exactly.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Shaw? We do have ordinance 125-2024. Can you adjourn this agreement? Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only. Ordinance number 125-2024, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into a tree removal agreement with R.P. Stewart for the removal of two trees located at 4620 getting through a drag from Asia, Ohio. I move for passage of ordinance number 125-2024 as an emergency measure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 125-2024 as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. An ordinance 125-2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. We're now up to agenda item 12. This is a zoning ordinance amendment application. It is clear out on King Road, and I think it's going to be controversial with the neighbors because it is proposing tiny homes adjacent to fairly large homes out on King Road. The only action that we need you to take tonight is to refer to this to the planning commission. And when we have a public hearing on this one, we may have people in attendance. Mr. Hanam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we refer zoning application number ZA-3-2024 to our municipal planning commission for their review and recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This will be on the agenda. I don't remember whether it makes it this month?
It does.
Okay, so it's a week from Wednesday, probably. Okay.
I hope you will share with your planning commission your observations and that they take those into account.
It is a PD which allows them to do it. It's not a change to the zoning ordinance, but it is a definite change in what we've done in the past. Joe, you had, we had talked about this. This is in lieu of, perhaps, how many regular R1 lots that fit on here? I think you had an approximate notebook for me.
Yeah, we're, 60 are proposed here. I think in one rendition, I'd seen of large lots, maybe around 12. It would be really similar to Larburg Lane just south of this particular property, 1,000 feet or so.
It's very profitable for the current property owner to do this, and we have to decide whether we think it's appropriate or not.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I have a little question for Mr. Shaw. Do you have any idea, you said tiny house? What are the square footages?
I think they were less than 1,000 square feet.
This is on here, they'd be 30 by 40, so about 100 square feet.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I may also suggest[1612.84]